Good evening and welcome to the special business meeting of the Putnam Valley Board of Education and one of the most special meetings we have all year long. Please stand and join me as we salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is probably the only meeting of the year that the audience outnumbers the board members, but today even more so, and I wanted to, I was about to announce why we only had two board members here. The third board member was stuck in traffic and has just arrived. Mr. Smith has a family obligation and wasn't able to be here, and I want to make an announcement that Mr. David Spittle has resigned his position from the Board of Education. He had already opted not to run, but he has resigned early. He has some professional and personal commitments that are going to make him unable and to fulfill his obligations on the board any longer. So I just want to, and I hope he's listening somewhere out there in television land, I've also told him this 100 times, I want to thank him for his almost eight years of service on the Board of Education. He was always an advocate for children, really spoke his beliefs, spoke what he felt and what was best for the children of this district, and we are going to miss him behind these seats. So please join me as we say thank you.
I want to add that Mr. Spittle is under consideration for a position with the district, which is part of the reason for the resignation. And we know that David has been a supporter of everyone in the district for many years.
Okay, now for, we're going to stay with the goodbye theme, and we're going to now do something very special, and that is a recognition of our retirees.
So I'd like to start with our ambassador. I consider Mr. Bellino the ambassador for this school district. When I first came here, when I first arrived here, it was with the help of Mr. Bellino and Ms. Bellino that I was oriented to Putnam Valley and felt welcomed and supported. He has been here since the early 90s when he was a member of the Citizens Advisory Committee. He's in the public domain with the schools since the early 90s. Appointed to the Board in the 1994-95 school year, served through 2004, and in July 13, when I came on Board, he was appointed the Clerk of the Works for the resurfacing of the Turf Track Capital Project. And then in August 2013, appointed Director of Facilities, Technology, and Transportation. And he's done that, he's done that job now since that time. This is not a job to Mr. Bellino. This is his passion, this is the school and the facilities of this school district and the entire school district, and what it means, its vision and where it's going. This has been his life, a major part of his life. I wouldn't say his whole life, he does have a family, now he has a grandchild, so definitely his life.
We take second fiddle for sure.
But in many, many ways, this has been a core purpose in everything that he's done, and the facilities show it, and whenever anyone comes to our schools, they're always amazed at the quality of the work and how this district, the district buildings really reflect the goals of the district, the vision of the district. And this has been the case throughout his time, whether he was serving and as a Board member or serving in the role of Facilities Director. And many projects that we're in the process of actually implementing, such as the EPC project, the Energy Performance Contract, some of the facilities planning that we're doing right now, so many of the changes. Just a few weeks ago, we had been talking about the fact that we were going to have one lunch period next year and that we needed to use that security area that houses the, our SRO for, during, for that lunchtime, and within a week, we had an office now in the entrance to the school for the SRO, which actually also fit our whole idea of safety and security, which is something that has again been number one on Mr. Bellino's list of things to do in the district, and that he supervised this entire security project here, all of the cameras, all of the changes in security in the doors and windows. I mean, so much has been accomplished in the last five years, and we're very, very grateful for his service and for his support of our administrators and for his role on the administrative team. So I know that we will continue to see Mr. Bellino as a member of our school and district community. So we wish Mr. Bellino the best in his next endeavors, and I just don't think that he's really going to go very far. He's going to be, so congratulations.
You guys all started clapping, which was very nice, but you know, Fran said she didn't think I was going to go far, my teacher said the same thing, so it's not a big deal. You know, I'm up here 30 years more than I moved here from the Bronx, from Yonkers, Bronx to Yonkers and up here, and love the place. I'll always say, you know, I'll be 100 years old, still say I'm a Bronx boy, but this is, this is my home. This is where we live, this is where, you know, my kids grew up, and it's that important to me. When I got involved with the schools was because of this rather small gentleman named John Kleinegris. John was like 6'4", 350, but you never saw a man that was so impassioned by children, and he helped build that in me. Now, I tend to be a competitive person, so that's the piece that John didn't have, so whatever, you know, when we said the child first and foremost, I truly believe that, and I truly believe we have people and staff here that do also. My goal when I was here is just one, I want us to be the best. I will tell you, and I'm so pleased, you know, that I'm tied in with a certain group of people here tonight, the people that are getting tenure, my fellow administrators. I've worked, you know, again, I'm probably doing this almost 30 years, you know, for the schools in different capacities, and I will tell you, I've worked with some great individuals in that time, in those 30 years, but I will tell you, as a team, and I've told Fran this before, this is the best team I have ever worked with, so I want to say thank you, and just please keep moving this forward. So, thank you.
And I just want to add that Pat's legacy is going to live on in a couple of ways. There is an award at the middle school, the Patrick Bellino Award for Persistence, AKA nagging and badgering to get something done on time, and that award was put in place several years ago before persistence and grit became a buzzword of education, and it is what makes you successful in life, and Pat's an example of that. And his second legacy is the number of students that have on their diploma his name as Board of Education President. He all but put the mortar on this building himself, and if they, when I first came to the district, the high school wasn't built yet, it was building, and I thought he was the construction crew chief or the project manager. When I later met him, I was like, oh, he worked for the school? So in those two ways, that tenacity, that persistence and that grit, students learn that that's how things get done, and there are people that will always see his name on their diploma. So we will miss you. I don't think you're going anywhere either, but thank you again.
Next, we have Laura Hirsch. And Laura, I could, if Pat is the ambassador, Laura is the head cheerleader of the school district and the school. From the very first time I met Laura and saw her with the students and how she related to them and how she just gave that spirit, the spirit of Putnam Valley, I knew this was the, you know, the epitome of the cheering section, and it really brings so much, it contributes so much happiness and joy to people in the school every day, that smile and that, that love of life. So Laura started as a part-time teacher aide at the elementary school in October of 94, full-time aide at the elementary school in January 95, and then full-time teacher aide here at the high school when it opened in 2000, in the year 2000. She was a soccer coach and sports chaperone, class advisor, budget advisory committee, and the extended school year teacher aide, but she really is much more than that, and that's why I had to start with that representation. She is, she embodies the spirit of Putnam Valley, so I don't know, again, I don't know, I know you're moving away, so this is hard, but we will have to keep you in our spirit because you have given us a great sense of the spirit of Putnam Valley. Thank you, Laura.
I have nothing planned, but I just want to tell you, I love all of you. I will miss every one of you in this district. I love you, love you, love you all, but I love my kids a little, and my grandbabies a little bit more, so I gotta go with them. And I do love you, Putnam Valley, love you, love you, love you. John Kleinegris, thank you for giving me that job, okay? Love you.
And while she's walking, I just want to add, staff members like Laura make working mothers feel okay about working because they know that there's a mother, as much as she got emotional about leaving all of you, it's not all of you she's going to miss. It's the kids, the influence, seeing their dreams fulfilled, making sure they have what they need to have fun outside of the classroom and in the classroom. I know my son dealt with many lost hat and lost uniform by going to Ms. Hirsch's office, so she's a cheerleader, but she's also the mother our kids had when we were all at work, so I'm also going to miss her. I really don't believe she's leaving, except those grandchildren are really, really cute, and they're really far away, so.
Next, we're going to honor Tommy Hirsch, and Brian Burrow is going to do the honors with that.
Yeah.
Good. What a bittersweet day. This is, this is difficult. Not just for Tom, but for all the retirees and all the celebration that we're here Tom Hirsch is retiring. As I type those words, so many thoughts pop into my head. I never thought I would see the day, and as most can imagine, I often wish it would never come. Wow. I did not expect this. I'll be fine, I'll be fine.
You're fine. Persistence, persistence and grit, you'll be okay.
Tom has been a staple on the Putnam Valley sidelines at least as far back as 2003. I tried to do some research with Brian and Ted and all the guys, they think about, about that time. Volunteering to film games and archive tapes to be watched by coaches and teams, we still have the old card catalog, we used to keep them all in, in the cage. Through his time here at Putnam Valley, he has transitioned us from tapes to DVDs to media cards to completely online platform. Exchanges that go on today are fairly seamless, and when we need to make an actual DVD, it feels like we're stepping back in time. But this is only one role that Tom has fulfilled here in Putnam Valley. In addition to videographer, you can call him the key master, and oftentimes hear him coming from about 100 yards away. You can call him the historian, recalling memories and past practice that almost countless ADs have drawn upon in their time here. That was supposed to be funny.
I laughed, Brad.
I can't count how many times I've heard or used the line, like, "I'm not sure, but ask Tommy, he'll know." I think everybody's said that once or twice. Tirelessly helping coaches out when they need assistance with equipment, gym setup, scoreboard setup, film viewing, all at the absolute last minute, mind you. He has helped to make this school and athletic department what it is today. Tom, I don't know what I'm going to do without you. You're a friend, a confidant, and an amazing person. Thank you for everything that you have done for countless students, parents, and coaches of the Putnam Valley Central School District, and we wish you all the best in your next
When I first got here this evening, I asked Tommy, can you actually retire when you're a volunteer? Does it work that way? I'm not so sure, and I, and I wasn't going to say anything because I didn't want to say anything after Brian's beautiful tribute, but Dr. Wills just said, I bet people don't know that he's a volunteer, and certainly if you look at the number of hours he's been here, people would not know that. So I didn't want to say that, and I wish the Hirsches quite the adventure as they move on to grandparents and probably run a field out in Pennsylvania somewhere.
The final retiree for this evening could not be here, Diane Gil-Martin. Diane was hired in September of 1988. She was a special education teacher from 1988 through 2004, and a general education teacher from 2004 to 2018. And what I really want to do is read a letter I received from a parent of a graduating senior this year who saw that Diane was retiring and wrote a lovely letter regarding her son's experience with Mrs. Gil-Martin, and this is the letter. "I see in today's email from Dr. Wills that you are retiring, and I wanted to wish you a warm congratulations for myself and my son Joseph. Joseph, now a senior and the class salutatorian, was in your second grade class all those years ago. Your influence, encouragement, support, and love is still a constant force in the student and person he has become. There are many faculty members of whom we have fond memories who helped form his character, guided him in study habits, and encouraged his desire to be a scholar and athlete. We attribute his being selected as salutatorian to all of those teachers who had an impact on him, from kindergarten all the way along his journey to his senior year. However, there are a few who shine brighter than others, and we will never forget your passion for and love of teaching and learning. We wish you all the best in your future endeavors, and thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all you did and have done for Joseph over the years. Fond regards and best wishes."
So what a good way to honor. So we are moving right on to new business? Is that how we're doing the order, and then we're doing presentations later? And new business on tonight is a celebration. We just finished talking about people who have spent their entire careers here, and then some, Pat, Tommy, and now we're talking about people who are about to start their entire careers here. So I will, we will start with Ms. Rowan, go back and forth, and during the comments. Hmm? Oh, great. I'm supposed to ask for public comments on any of the agenda items? Now, so starting new business, number one, Mr. Ferraro.
Resolved in the recommendation of Superintendent Schools that Brian Burrow is granted tenure in the position of Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective July 1st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments?
So I would like to, to share some of my observations and comments regarding Mr. Burrow's time here, and when I met him, it was four years ago, and I will read a little bit of what I wrote to the Board in my recommendation for tenure for Brian Burrow. "Four years ago, I was able to observe Mr. Burrow in his role as administrative intern in the Athletic District and Special Education Office. It was that early introduction to Mr. Burrow's serious diligence in performing tasks assigned by district administrators that I recognized a dedicated servant leader. Mr. Burrow reflected the understanding of responsibility and reliability required to take the first steps as a leader. He always accomplished more than was required and was eager to get involved in the complexities of policy and budget preparation. His background as a physical education teacher who had developed productive and positive relationships with students and his peers prepared him for his appointment as Athletic Director Intern. Thrust into the dynamics of this role, he was able to navigate some very difficult personnel matters, as well as the continual parent interactions, often at times emotional. During that time, he took on the responsibility of implementing the IMPACT program to prevent and manage the return to play after concussions. He demonstrated his ability to plan, administer, and follow through. In the same way, Brian worked to obtain an outstanding athletic trainer who is admired and trusted by parents, students, and staff. Willing to reflect and learn, Brian is able to work through what can be an overwhelming set of pressure points and integrated the learning into his ability to negotiate and plan, finding solutions to problems that have resulted in improved environment for athletics in Putnam Valley with a stable foundation for the future. Brian was able to work with demanding coaches and replace some personnel without excessive problems for the district. Caring about students and their achievement, Brian recreated the academic eligibility process to build relationships with students so that the issue of eligibility has become less prevalent. Students understand the expectations and feel supported. As the district lost some teacher-coaches, Brian was able to attract both teaching staff and outside candidates with the ability to shape outstanding athletic teams that students could feel proud to join. In his role as a teacher-observer and evaluator, Brian is well-respected and diligent in his role as teacher-observer and evaluator, and providing support as well as strategies for improvement. He's also responsible for supervising the nurses. He worked to establish a new process for physicals to make the process more efficient for parents, and he has had to manage all kinds of difficult situations in his role, which is very complex, and we know that in the role of Athletic Director, you're always dealing with difficult and often challenging relationships. And it is for these reasons that I have recommended to the Board the tenure of Brian Burrow."
And I just want to add that a lot of people think, you know, that one of the benefits of being in education is you have your evenings and weekends free, not so much when you're an athletic director. So I want to thank Brian's wife and daughter and son for sharing him with us, and the only other time this room is this full is when there's a hot-button athletic issue. You know, so we know that athletics really causes a lot of passion among people in ways that other things really don't in the same level, and Brian has been able to handle that with calmness, equanimity, and professionalism, and he's really been an asset. So we look forward to seeing him do that for many, many, many years to come. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because we have to thank them as well for supporting Brian. And his little, the baby boy looks exactly like Brian.
He's almost as tall, too. Mr. Cohen, you want to read number two for us?
Resolved in the recommendation of Superintendent Schools that Jeanette Mistrata is granted tenure in the area of Assistant Elementary School Principal in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective July 1st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments? The questions or comments are going to the podium.
We'll start, I think that Margaret wanted to say a few words to start. Good evening. I'm Margaret Podesta, Principal of the Putnam Valley Elementary School, and I have the extreme honor of working every day, side by side, minute by minute, with my colleague, Jeanette Mistrata, who is receiving tenure tonight. When I first came to Putnam Valley five years ago now, I met this outstanding third-grade teacher. I would go in to observe her class and was blown away by the progressive measures she was using, the data she was collecting, the results she was getting from her students, and the courage that she had. She walked into my office one day and said, you know, "There are these new lessons associated with these new standards. I think I'm going to give them a try." And I just couldn't believe how dynamic and how engaging she was with those students and her colleagues. An assistant principal's job in my mind is to make the principal look good. So, Jeanette, I just walked into this room, she brought me my keys that I forgot in the other room. It's just like how we work. If it's raining, she hands me an umbrella. She, she doesn't miss a trick. She's definitely one of the smartest, most compassionate people I know. She's worked with the teaching staff as a teacher colleague, so she has friendships that she developed as a teacher, but with all that she has, with the studying that she does, the leadership qualities, the attention to detail with everything, testing, schedules, lunch monitor issues, everything she handles, she has her priorities. Her priority is here tonight, AJ, Mistrata. That's, that's mom's priority, right there. And as a mom myself, Jeanette and I spend more than we should the time we talk about our own children, but that makes us really good educators, you know, because we have to talk about those issues so that we can relate. issues so that we can relate to everybody else's. But working with Jeanette for me, not only is she so detail-oriented, so bright, so together, but she's also someone who understands children with dignity and with so much respect. And when we get our issues, whether it's on the bus, or recess, or a classroom issue, very, very rarely do we see it differently. We're kind of like one mind. We know what's important. We know what the children stand for. And I've only grown because of working from, with her. She, I learn from her every day. I trust her completely. And it's my honor to say that you are tenured tonight, Ms. Mistrata.
Dr. Will said she still wants to talk about Jeanette.
I just have to say a few things.
That wasn't part of the dress rehearsal there.
Stay nearby.
As a teacher leader in the classroom, Ms. Mistrata demonstrated the highest level of performance through student achievement on both math and English assessments in the very first Common Core administration. Her knowledge of the state learning standards and strategies for instruction and student engagement provide a background that ensures her credibility with teachers that she observes and evaluates. A diligent student of the Danielson model and APPR procedures, Ms. Mistrata coaches her peers in the observation and score recording process used by the district and supports the other administrators in their supervisory work. Dedicated to school safety, she has been working closely with bus drivers and parents to improve discipline and compliance with all of the seatbelt requirements that we have implemented due to her assiduous work with that, and often speaks to students on the buses. Connecting with parents and teachers through warm and trusting relationships, Ms. Mistrata supports the principal in every way possible to create a positive environment for all in the school community. Attention to detail is a critical attribute of the assistant principal, and Ms. Mistrata has been focused and determined in the new responsibilities related to teacher assistance, scheduling of programs, and enforcing the regulatory scaffolding of the school organization. Assisting the principal with competence and devotion to her duties, Ms. Mistrata is trusted for her responsible and respectful approach to problem-solving with staff, parents, and students. And she is, Ms. Mistrata is, Jeanette is just, and one of the crucial, crucial people who makes this district what it is now. And so, thank you. Thank you, Jeanette.
And before I call for the vote, I just want to just say very briefly that in the dictionary next to the word "kind," there should be a picture of Jeanette Mistrata. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And she makes good pesto, too, out of the garden. I forgot that part.
And I, we would ask if Jeanette's family would like to stand. AJ, recognized?
Thank you for sharing Jeanette with us.
And can I ask the elementary school to stand because they're Jeanette's family here? So.
Okay, this is fun. Next.
Resolved in recommendation, superintendent schools.
Did we vote? Did we say all in favor, aye?
Yeah. Good to be safe. Good to be safe. Resolved in recommendation of superintendent schools that Sandra Entieri is granted tenure in the position of High School Principal in the Putnam Valley Central School District effective August 7th, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments?
With the Board of Education's appointment of Sandra Entieri as Putnam Valley High School's Principal, a new era of sustained and positive, strong and passionate leadership elevated the high school's direction, motivating and challenging staff to a higher level of student engagement and accomplishment. Taking the reins strongly in hand, Ms. Entieri has become a ubiquitous face of the school and instrumental in the district's efforts to ensure that every student succeeds. There is nothing that daunts Ms. Entieri, even as she faces all of the anxiety and doubts about such issues as changing the scheduling model or the start of school time. Her fearlessness rooted in knowledge and experience is a signal that persuades staff to move forward and takes, take on new strategies to build student confidence and success. For example, with the new schedule, Ms. Entieri provided a compendium of strategies that would allow the longer class periods to become opportunities for engagement. Her teacher observations and recommendations are exceptional in their specificity and have earned the teachers' respect and willingness to do things differently to promote student learning. It is notoriously difficult to persuade high school teachers to adjust their instructional model. However, and I've been with many, many high school faculties, so I speak from experience.
He agrees.
However, Ms. Entieri's willingness to model and support and the concrete suggestions she provides have made a difference. Her firm approach to order and discipline in concert with the assistant principal, tempered with caring and support, have provided a safe and comfortable environment for students. Her rigorous RTI process and three-week monitoring find students are sometimes, who are sometimes invisible and creates plans for their improved emotional and academic status. In moving her office, she opened the conference room adjacent to her office to students who choose to study and work together there. Ms. Entieri has encouraged and cheered on students through her regular attendance at events and her exceptional command of social media to champion students' successes. And I haven't even begun to talk about some of the other initiatives that Ms. Entieri has, has begun, has commenced, and has implemented in the school. But it's one thing that just occurred to me today as I went to visit Ms. Entieri was that that room next to her office is filled with students who are studying, talking, building their relationships in such a positive way. That sense of wanting to be next to the principal is very powerful. And when you see that, when you see those students there, you know that things are going very, very right at that school. So I heartily recommend it, Sandy, for that.
And I'm just going to add, when you think how, it's three years? Two years, three years?
Three years.
Three years. When you look at the changes that have happened in three years, I feel like we could be talking about somebody who's retiring. That's how the influence that she's had. And I just love that among her initiatives are academic rigor and a senior lounge. She knows that you need, she knows you need both. And about, education is a balance, and emotional students are a balance. So you're a welcome figure around here, Sandy. Congratulations. Now we can all vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You already did that.
And special thanks to Joe for being here with his mom.
We move back to you, Mr. Cohen, for number four.
Resolved in recommendation, resolved in the recommendation of superintendent schools that Sarah Riley be granted tenure in the area of English at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I'd just like to read some of what Mr. McCarty wrote regarding Ms. Riley. And I myself have been in the classroom, as has Jermaine. I know Mr. Luft, Dr. Luft would like to say a few words as well. But some of the things that Mr. McCarty mentioned have to do with how consistently Sarah differentiates her lessons and assisting students who need additional time by being available during lunch and recess, and the passion that Sarah has for, for English. I know that I spent quite a bit of time observing when Sarah was teaching the journalism course and how engaged the students were and the different strategies that Sarah used for that journalism program. She is filled with ideas and initiatives. She herself has a passion for gardening. She's also an expert archer, which I found out, which is very interesting, that, and she has been very eager to actually share that skill in the school with, with students. She also organized a seventh-grade class trip to Sturbridge Village and worked closely with the teachers and the office personnel and administration to ensure that the trip ran smoothly. She has been a full contributor to the school in many different ways. So I have been very happy and eager, and so has Mr. McCarty, to recognize and recommend Ms. Riley for tenure. And I know Dr. Luft had some, he was observing her this year.
Sure. So I had the privilege of visiting Ms. Riley's classroom this year. I'm just going to share a little excerpt from my observation. When I went into her classroom, it just dawned on me, and I hope I'm not violating any labor laws by reading issues from a personnel file, but it was a pleasure visiting Ms. Riley's classroom. She was observed to be knowledgeable and a passionate educator. She did an excellent job in providing students with an overview of what was going to be accomplished during the day and included a do-now for students to work on as they entered the classroom. Many students in her classroom were observed to be engaged within the lesson and eager to participate when requested. Throughout the lesson, Ms. Riley circulated the classroom, checking in on student understanding. While checking for student understanding, Ms. Riley provided students with lots of positive praise. On several, several occasions, Ms. Riley asked students to explain why they came up with an answer and to identify text-based evidence to support their claim. Ms. Riley used a random name selector to select students to answer questions, to keep everyone involved. Ms. Riley was observed to push students to expand their thinking. Ms. Riley communicated her expectations to the students in the beginning of class and held them accountable to those standards throughout the lesson. Ms. Riley utilized technology in a way that supported and enhanced her instruction without becoming the focus of her instruction. Students in Ms. Riley's class were observed to be engaged and eager to participate in the activity. It's my belief that Ms. Riley will continue to be a valuable asset for Putnam Valley Schools for years to come. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved in recommendation of superintendent schools that Abby Forliso be granted tenure in the elementary school, elementary tenure area at the Putnam Valley Central School District effective August 31st, 2018.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I will, I will read from Ms. Podesta's recommendations, and I had, I often enter Ms. Forliso's classroom because it is a place of joy and happiness for the students. There are so many engaging activities going on when I come in. There's nothing better to change your mood than to walk into the kindergarten classes. And I'll read from the recommendation from Ms. Podesta. Ms. Forliso sets up her classroom so that all students can be successful while maintaining high learning standards for all. Ms. Forliso is skilled at having her kindergarten students set their own learning goals in the areas of reading, writing, and math. The students also set their own social goals, and they support each other in reaching them. Ms. Forliso establishes strong relationships and open lines of communication with the families of her students, and she carefully differentiates lessons in order to meet the individual learning needs of all students. She establishes a warm, engaging, and active learning environment each year, and she earns the love and respect of all her students and their families. Ms. Forliso eagerly collaborates with her colleagues to design lessons that are enriching, engaging, and effective for her students.
So I know you hear this a lot, but I knew that I liked Ms. Forliso the first day I met her, which was our superintendent's conference day in the beginning of the school year, when we quickly discovered that we shared the same birthday. That had no bearing on her receiving tenure here tonight. But I did have the privilege to observe her in her classroom, so I'll read just a little excerpt. Upon entering, it was immediately evident that Ms. Forliso's classroom was a welcoming and friendly learning environment where all students felt supported. Ms. Forliso did an excellent job in keeping students engaged throughout each activity and transitioned them quickly between several activities to maintain their attention. As a father of a kindergarten student, that is key. Ms. Forliso called on students by name and provided lots of positive feedback throughout the lesson. Ms. Forliso did an excellent job in bringing her students through an I-do, we-do, you-do instructional model that was determined to be both age-appropriate and representative of current best practices. This gradual release of responsibility allowed her to effectively model before allowing the students to actively participate in their own learning. It was truly a pleasure visiting Ms. Forliso's classroom. Her students were observed to not only be engaged but supported throughout the lesson. Her classroom was filled with smiling faces of students who enjoyed to be there and were eager to participate in the day's activities. The classroom was observed to be print-rich, and students were seen using materials hung around the classroom to help guide their thinking. I have every reason to believe Ms. Forliso will continue to be an asset in Putnam Valley for years to come. Thank you. I believe Ms. Podesta also wants to say a few words.
Just quickly, Abby and I were saying today, we can't believe how fast these few years have gone, but what you've done, Abby, is just bring more positive culture into that building. She's so easy to work with. She's highly requested, not that we take requests from parents, but she's also requested by teachers because she's easy to work with, she's a great thinker, a great collaborator, and her classroom is truly a very innovative, warm space. It's a pleasure to work with you. Congratulations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You are all.
I disagree. Every, every board meeting is a celebration.
I stand corrected.
I got to sit on that side of the table.
You're all by yourself again, Mr. Cohen. We will be doing some presentations now, including the traffic study and BOC's vote and a few other items of business. You're all cordially invited to stay, but I think it's past some of your bedtime. You need to be up early in the morning.
Yes, we are welcoming Dave from CHA, and CHA did a traffic study for us as we prepared to launch our later start this September. We wanted to have some surety about the way we could handle the increase in number of buses and so on at the start of the school day with the high school and middle school coming together. So, thank you, Dave.
Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge the team from CHA that worked on this project. I'm Dave Cowall, senior planner, and then Sarah Bowman is a professional traffic operations engineer, and Tim Hughes is an engineering intern. And then notoriously, Pat Polino was our study advisor, so provided a lot of great insight into the campus operations and some of the issues. So our study objectives, really, what we wanted to do was document the existing conditions, and then the process was then to estimate how traffic would change as a result of the schedule consolidation, and then looking at the different traffic performance metrics that would be used to measure whether it's going to be successful or not. There's the campus that everybody's familiar with. The focus of the study was really three areas, starting with the intersection with Peak Skill Hollow Road, and then at the high school drop-off pickup area and crosswalk, and then at the middle school drop-off area, which is at the end of that parking bay and the circulating areas. And the reasons that we focused on those areas was because they are the areas of principal amounts of conflict and would be most sensitive to changes in traffic volume. The data collection consisted of cameras and manual counts. We set up cameras at the two drop-off areas, and then we had our engineering intern manually count the intersection with the access and Peak Skill Hollow Road. We did that for two-hour periods that provide an envelope around the peak times of traffic activity, and then we validated that because we wanted to make sure that the data that we collected was representative of a typical day. And so we compared the school population attendance records for the day that we collected the data against averages for the school to make sure that there wasn't something abnormally, a flu outbreak or something that would have affected attendance. And then we also compared the traffic counts that we collected at Peak Skill Hollow Road against some historic data from the county and from DOT. This exhibit just shows the pattern of traffic entering and exiting. The school, these are measurements at the entrance out from Peak Skill Hollow Road. You'll see the top curve is cars, and then the lower curve in each group are the buses. You'll see that, as shown here, during the peak hour, which is in the shaded areas representing the peak hours of traffic, so the whole graph represents the two-hour period. You'll see that 384 vehicles entered the school campus in the peak 60-minute period of the morning, and then 185 were exiting. And then in the afternoon, you see the volumes are much lower, with 109 entering and 216 exiting. Those represent roughly, in the morning, the peak hour represents almost 80% of the total two-hour traffic. And then in the afternoon, it's more like 2/3 of the traffic. The other thing I wanted to note, and this is obvious to everybody that works at the school, but the graph shows the two peaks of the bus activity coming into the school, first to drop off high school students and then later to drop off the middle school students. I think one of the things that's interesting about the data was that both of the peak times for the high school and the middle school are both encapsulated in the highest hour already. And so when we start thinking about how the volume gets compressed because of the consolidation of the school, we find, and I get a little bit ahead of here, but what we find is that in terms of total new traffic being introduced within that peak hour doesn't increase a lot. But what it does do is it compresses into a shorter 15-minute period. And so that, again, if you kind of compare, you see here that there's a slight increase from the 384 to 396, and the 185 exit to 197. So there's a little bit of an increase, but it's not a lot. But one of the things that we look at when we evaluate the impact of this on traffic operations is we look at, what is the peak 15-minute period? How does that operate? Because that really is kind of the governing performance. In the consolidation, you'll see that if you look at the bus line along the bottom, one of the benefits is that even though there would be more buses, they're all coming in one group, and so you don't have the double bump of bus traffic circulating through the campus twice during the peak hour, it's only once. And because of the randomness of the way buses arrive in the morning, there's less of a peak demand. And so the difference between the 18 bus fleet and the 21 bus fleet doesn't have a big influence on the amount of traffic that's being generated during those key times.
So can you clarify something for me?
Sure.
The left side, the left panel versus the right panel, the difference in the...
It's the peak hour. The left panel is the entering traffic during the morning and then during the afternoon. So the light blue is the entering traffic in the morning. The light green immediately adjacent to that is the entering traffic during the afternoon peak. And then the two groupings to the right are the exiting traffic in the morning and the afternoon.
So we'd see the difference in the peaks of the AM would be staff, the cars that don't leave.
Pardon?
The difference between the peak on the left side and the peak on the right side is the number of cars that stay here.
Those are the people that are parking and staying, at least within the two-hour interval that we captured. So it might still have been visitors, but yeah, that's the difference.
Seniors at practice, kids who...
This is just another exhibit to kind of illustrate the comparison of the traffic during the peak hour and peak 15-minute period between the existing configuration of classes and then with the scheduled consolidation. And you can see that there's a modest increase in the peak 15-minute period, but there's really not much increase in the total hourly volume. The other thing, I think, one of the things that we did too was, as we looked at compressing how the traffic would arrive, go back to, wrong way. You'll look at, there's really two, in the morning, there's two kind of high volumes at the left, at the beginning of the curve. We assumed that the early birds wouldn't change, which is probably a pretty conservative assumption, because I think as teachers and people that have some flexibility in their schedule are going to naturally try to get in and get out sooner. But so for our analysis, we just assumed that that kind of held true, and we just pushed that second 15-minute interval that was closest to the start time of classes to be the one that was going to absorb a lot of the shift. So then, after we developed this projection of what the future volumes would be with the consolidation, one of the tasks that we did was to evaluate how the intersection was going to operate at the signal coming in and out. And one of the things that we learned as we were doing this study was Putnam County is doing a project on Peak Skill Hollow Road to improve the site access. And when we did the study, we knew that they were going to provide the left turn lane into the site, but we just learned yesterday or the day before that that they're also going to provide a right turn lane. So our analysis doesn't reflect the full benefit of the improvements that they're doing, but what we found was that the consolidation of traffic during this peak 15-minute period will increase the delay, the average delay of traffic moving through the intersection pretty significantly from a statistical standard. You know, it's going to be about doubling the delay. But in context, it's still below the level that would be sought for a design if an engineer were designing the road from scratch. So from a rural's design standard, that line, which is the level of crossing from a level of service C to a D, which is kind of, that's the boundary that we try to stay below. So we'll say you will notice that there's a change, that there's more intensity of traffic during that 15-minute period, but it will still function at appropriate standards. And it will be better than what we're predicting it to be because there's going to be more capacity created by that right turn. Because what will happen is the right turn movement will be able to happen concurrently when traffic is exiting the school. And so that now it only gets traffic in a little bit more efficiently, but it also, it reduces the conflict with the people that are trying to turn left. And so that whole system will operate much more efficiently. When we got into the drop-off and pickups, there were a couple of things that we wanted to do, and we really got down to looking at minute-by-minute processing, and we were able to do that because of having the video, that we were able to look at, what is the precise minute-by-minute flow of traffic through those locations? And then what was the drop-off activity that occurred? And the kind of gray, real, like an earthquake line, seismic graph, that's all of the traffic moving through. In this case, this is at the high school drop-off in the morning. And so this shows kind of a minute-by-minute change. And then the line, the blue lines, are the points in time that a vehicle or a number of vehicles stopped to drop somebody off. And what we found from this was that, one, at the high school, there really weren't all that many drop-offs that happened. And overall, between both locations, the drop-offs are pretty efficient, and the average time for each drop-off was about eight seconds. One of the things that we did find was that people that dropped off at the high school were more diligent about staying outside of the main travel way, so that they always left room for people to get by. People that stopped at the middle school end weren't quite as considerate. And so there was some additional friction caused at the middle school end of things.
At the middle school, aren't people really trying to get at that stop sign, not go all the way through?
Well, that's part of it, too.
And make that left instead of go, there really isn't any room to let people by you, and they don't want to go straight. They're turning at the stop sign.
This is the same set of information but for the middle school drop-off. And you can see there's obviously, there's two groups of pretty intense drop-off activity, one of them during the high school kind of peak hour or peak 15-minute period. And so we couldn't tell from the resolution of the photography that we had, we couldn't tell kind of by intention much detail about the age of the students. So we were guessing that those were high school students that were being dropped off to get access to the cafeteria because they were kind of getting there before school was starting.
Or they're middle school students coming in on the high school time period for their clubs.
Or that, yeah. But anyway, so there is that, those two distinct patterns of drop-offs during that time. But again, the drop-offs are pretty quick, and I did want to just kind of show, here's an example of one of the things that we observed. This is at the middle school drop-off. But you can see in the, this is the image from one of the video, or from the video that we took. And you'll see, this is, there were these four vehicles that were in queue, basically. They were slow-moving, but they were, for all intents and purposes, I'm sure that they felt that they were in a queue. And all four of them, it turned out, to be dropping off. And what was interesting, the pattern was something was interesting in that the first vehicle pulled to the stop line and dropped their student off. The second car didn't, but the third car did, and then the fourth car didn't. And the first car was a little bit longer in making the exchange, and so the second car tried to pull around, and then there was a little bit of confusion about who was having the right of way at that point. But then the second picture to the right is just about 55 seconds later, it was gone. And then there was another arrival coming. And so I think my point is that even if within a minute, if we had, you know, four to six vehicles stopped to discharge a passenger, they would still do that and leave without really any interaction. There were a couple of times where you'd get clusters, but a lot of times it was just separately occurring instances, even though it's in a tight timeframe. It's in a minute, but you can process a lot of traffic in a minute. This is, again, looking at the difference in volume of drop-off activity that we would project in terms of a concentration, both in terms of the peak hour and the peak 15-minute period between the current condition and the class consolidation. And you'll see, again, it's the same thing. There's, you know, there is a larger increase at the middle school by the consolidation. There's, I think it's a... It's about a 26. No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong. Yeah, in the afternoon, it's about, or in the morning, it goes from about 49 to 60 vehicles, so about 11 more vehicles doing the drop-off in that 15-minute period. So when we looked at that data and we said, well, how is that change going to affect the queuing and the way traffic interacts? And because all of the, you know, it's kind of a random, you know, cars just come in and some of them stop, and some of them are just looking for parking. So we used a queuing model to estimate how the increase in traffic would affect the queues out in the circulating aisle. And based on that analysis, we found that, you know, that there's really not much change. And we looked at it at a 95th percentile confidence level statistical analysis and found that the difference between the probability, there's, basically, the statistical probability at a 95th percentile of confidence is that under current conditions, there would be no more than four vehicles together queued to drop off a student. And then in the consolidated condition, there would be five. So there's a possibility of one more in any given minute or cluster. of, of arrivals. So I, I guess, you know, from that, our, our conclusion from, from that data is that the, the consolidation isn't going to have much of an impact on, you know, a measurable impact that you would notice between the, the two conditions. The traffic flow is really going to be pretty much the same, even in that fifteen minute The one thing that we did look at, that Pat asked us, was that how would the consolidation affect, affect the bus staging? That really is, is an issue in the afternoon when all the buses have to arrive and then wait for the students to, to recess. The yellow line basically extend, you know, shows the limits of, of all eighteen buses and the three, the, the three vans. That would be the space preserving the openings for the, the crosswalks. So you can see, it's, it's, it's not ideal in the sense that you do have some buses overlapping at the end, but in terms of, in the basic objectives for, for bus staging is that, that there's a barrier, you know, a protected line between the bus and the school and, without interference, and that it's a hard surface. And so from, from those metrics, there's enough space to do that. And, and so I don't, you know, I don't think it's, you know, I think from a, from a design perspective, I, I think that it would be adequate to, to have that kind of configuration.
Dave, can I ask a question while we're here? Because this was one of my questions.
Sure.
The actual staging. And everybody who's, who sees the dismissal now can maybe even answer this. Do the buses wait till they're filled now and leave one at a time? Or are they in the order they're staged? Or do they pull out?
No, they don't pull out.
I imagine they all go one at a time. Okay. That would make sense.
The arrivals are more random.
Yeah, because they're all coming in at different times, sure.
And in theory, and in looking at this, if we were to lose the three parking spaces in the loop, because we have less staff here because the administration is over at the elementary school now, buses could loop into that loop rather than cut across here to, to fill in
You talking about the high school?
Right, I mean, at the high school, the, the teardrop. Where, right where the last bus ends, you could actually run two or maybe three buses into the loop, and it's not that tight of a, a turn that you couldn't fit two or three buses there, and you wouldn't have to worry about cutting this off down at the bottom.
Yeah.
That's, you know, one of the options you could look at.
So I think, you know, in, you know, the conclusion of the analysis was that the volume changes wouldn't be significant either. There were, there would be a larger increase in the peak fifteen minutes, as, as noted, about thirty to thirty-five vehicles during, you know, both times. And, but the overall peak hour change would only be about ten to fifteen. The drop offs would, again, it would change, but some of that is even, would change as much day to day as it would, you know, from the, from the schedule changes. And so, you know, we had, you know, you, you will notice the increase in delay at the intersection, but, but I think the improvements that the county is making, I think is going to offset that. And I think you're going to find that overall, that it's going to be a more positive experience getting in and out of the school. And the drop off queues statistically is not going to be significant. And, and so we, so I, I think, even though it sounds like, you know, you're, you're moving a lot of traffic through one very, one consolidated corridor into the school, it, it sounds like that's going to be a lot to deal with, but it doesn't, you know, it really can be handled by the capacity. One of the things, the other thing that I wanted to, to mention is, as we were looking at the video, we were trying to get an idea of how, you know, where the congestion was and where some of that concern was. And, and what we found was that there were, there were three periods, or three instances during the morning where traffic backed up as they were entering the, the high school, as they were approaching the crosswalk, that the traffic would back out and be what we call a, a slow moving queue. And, and by that, it's, it's, people are following more closely than they would at normal operating speed, and they're moving, but they're moving maybe ten miles an hour or fifteen miles an hour. And, and that queue would reach back to about the point where the buses would turn in. And so there's, so it's about nineteen vehicles that can fit in that space. We saw that happen three times in the morning. It lasted, in each time, lasted less than a minute. And it was primarily attributed to the, the crossing guard stopping traffic for pedestrians to cross. And so it was relatively short duration. It didn't take long for it to clean up. And so, so again, it does happen, and it will happen, continue to happen, you know, if, if nothing is done. But I, again, I don't, I don't think it's outside the, the tolerance of, of the expectation for coming into a school environment during, during a peak. One of the things, some of the other things that, that Pat had asked us to do was to, to say, well, you know, knowing that the board, there was some sentiment among the board that things weren't ideal, and, and what could you do if you wanted to make improvements? And so, so we started looking at that a little bit, and, and one of the things we, we kind of said, well, some of the things that we want to kind of set as a foundation for how we would look at improvements was, one is, the one-way circulation is a real positive attribute of the system, and so that we wanted to work within the context of maintaining that circulation. The other thing Pat said, well, what about taking out the, the, the extra exit lane, and we'll just have a single lane? And operationally, I don't think that, that would be a good idea because that helps manage the way time is allocated with the signal. And if you start, if you have a single lane, then you start demanding more time to be provided to the side street or, you know, to the school access, which then affects the, the traffic trying to get in, because they're not getting as much time anymore. And then you're starting to get more queuing in this, you know, on the site. And so we're like, if we can avoid that, we don't really want to do that. And then the other thing that, that Pat said, and he's full of great ideas, but he said, well, the bus lane is pretty wide, and it's, it's twenty-four, twenty-four foot wide. And he said, can we do something with that besides, you know, can we allow teachers or, or somebody else to use that access concurrently with the buses? So we looked at that, and a couple, a couple of problems with that, basically, is that it's a, it's, it's, it's not a recommended practice to do that. But there's also the issue of, it's, it's, the, the vehicle and traffic code requires traffic to stop at a flashing red signal on campus or not, and so you wouldn't get through.
You mean with twelve flashing red buses.
All those flashing red buses as they're, as they're dropping students off. So, so that's really not a, a viable solution. So we said, okay, that, those are, those are the three kind of premises that we're going to work with as we look through. But, but so we said, well, what, what are the things that could be done? And, and we looked at it from kind of two, two ways. One is, we always look at, how can we manage travel demand? If we have a, a limited infrastructure, what can we do to, to make things operate better? And, and the two things that, that we thought of is, is, you know, from an educational program standpoint, you know, I think remind, you know, maybe beginning of year reminders to parents that when they drop off, to try to pull to the right to leave as much room, kind of as a courtesy to reinforce that. There's also, I, we had noticed from the video, instances where someone was pulled off to this, into the, kind of that side marked area that, that Pat designated, and they were doing their drop off thing, and another car would pull up beside them. And the, the car that had finished dropping this, the child off, just started moving, and they kind of then jockeyed for position. And, you know, and so I think, you know, and I don't know whether, it was hard to tell whether they were aware that the other vehicle had arrived, or, or whether they were just being aggressive because they wanted to get out. But I think, you know, maybe some kind of a pamphlet at the beginning of the year to say, you know, kind of the, the courtesy rules of the road when dealing with that might be, you know, a, a benefit. And I, you know, encouraging people to, when there's, when there, when there's a choice, and I think some of this will happen naturally. People say, gee, if I, if I arrive five minutes sooner, it's going to be a lot easier for me to get through. And so some of that peak might, might moderate a little bit over time. And then promoting carpooling. Pat was always saying to me, he's like, well, now with the consolidation, a lot of middle school students are going to ride with their high school brother or sister, and so that there's going to be, so then the, so then the carpool doesn't have, or the, the drop off by the parent doesn't have to happen because they're going to consolidate trips. You know, that, who knows how much that, that would really happen, but, but it could. And, and I think also just kind of talking, kind of stewardship with, with students, that if they have opportunities to ride share with, with other students to, that that would be a benefit to them and a benefit to the environment. But then we did get to some ideas about some physical improvements that, that could be made, and I think, you know, I mean, they would be capital projects. There's nothing really easy about it. And, but, and, and I think we're not convinced that the, the cost would be benefit, would provide a, a good return on the investment, given the fact that things are going to work pretty much okay. But we did want to, we did want to present it so that if it, just for, to generate thought and, and maybe some future planning. But, but what we thought as an idea, and it would be challenging physically to do, but was that if you re- relocated the bus access to be closer, and I know that there would be retaining walls and, and grade issues and things to, to achieve this, but if you, if you pulled the, the bus access closer to the entrance, and then separated the visitor parking, and combined that with a, a, a formal drop off pickup area. And then in this concept, what we're presenting would be, a couple of things that it would do, it would extend the area for buses to stage, so that that, that would help that operation. But then the drop off pickup and visitor parking, we're showing it in this exhibit as coming off of the, off of the main parking module, but there could also be the, the potential to use the existing
Access.
Access and, and have them come, you know, have it be a right turn in. We would still encourage the traffic to leave through the parking module to preserve the one way, because with the, with the curve and the grade, site distance could be problematic, and you would introduce a point of conflict of, if, if traffic were trying to make left turns out of that parking lot. So, you know, I, I think, you know, that could, these are things that are kind of, when they, when they talk about kind of recommended configurations for school campuses, they always talk, you know, separate your, your visitor and pu, and drop off parking from other areas. But sometimes it's not possible, and sometimes, like I said, you, you have very small periods of time where you have any kind of real evident congestion. And, and so that it would be kind of using a sledgehammer to swat a fly, kind of, kind of thing. And that's, that's the extent of our study.
Natalie, I, I just have a question.
Uh huh.
So you said that with a ninety-five percent confidence level, right? What is the standard deviation on the wait time that could happen? That concerns me just because when you're combining two campuses, obviously, we know with statistics, there is a standard deviation both up and, and down. What, what is that impact? What could be that, that impact?
Well, yeah, I, offhand, I don't know what that
Okay.
What that is.
I just think that we should, we should really take a look at that, because I think that that, that standard deviation on the traffic pattern could really have significant, a significant impact on the wait time and, which, if, if it is significant on the other end, that we should, we need to take a, a bit of a look closer.
I mean, are you, are you thinking the standard deviation of, of the queue time?
The queue time and just that, the traffic pattern, like if, you know, if there aren't as many families, that there's always a standard deviation, and that always impacts, that's the impactful part. So I just think we should understand that a little bit better, if possible.
One of the comments I have, and, and you've given me a lot more hope than I had coming in, because I've really just been surrendering it up and hoping it'll all work out. But although I agree with Papalino that I think there are going to be some seniors driving in their little sisters, I also strongly suspect that we are going to have more parents driving in their high school and middle school children, because right now, a parent in Roaring Brook is not getting up at ten after six to drive their high school student in because they still have middle school children at home. But they may then now drive their children in later. So I have a feeling that with that forty-five minute later, we are going to have an increase in parents who, it's more on their way, they're getting ready to go to work. I know even way back when my son got in, I didn't leave when he left, so he got on the bus. Half an hour later, I was leaving for work. I would have driven him in, you know, if we were leaving at the same time, so that's
The one positive thing with that is that the drive is shorter for kids. In other words, they're on the buses.
So all parents might take advantage of
Yeah, they might take advantage of that. They're not on that, that, you know, bus for the, for the whole time.
Okay, that's true.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. So with the county putting in the right turning lane into campus, does that mean we should consider adding another lane into the campus? Because aren't they going to be competing with the left turning traffic at the same time? So, you know
Well, they'll be sort, they'll be sorting that protocol out at the, out at the intersection. I, I think the, the risk of adding another lane coming in is that then, then they have to weave and merge as they're approaching, and so that you, you end up with more of a risk of sideswipe kind of accidents as people are trying to sort their way into a line once they're in campus, and you don't have a lot of space for that. And so I think keeping that, that process of organizing space out at the intersection, I think it would be safer, and it's still going to be efficient, because, because the right turn is going to happen when, when the school, when, when traffic that's leaving is, is happening, as well as, you know, when, you know, when the, when the green arrow isn't on, the, the right turn traffic is going to have priority, and so that it kind of will sort itself out there.
Right. I think the fear is that the right turn traffic would have the right of way, and the left turn traffic would never get in unless they put a signal turn, a right turn into the campus there.
Well, the, well, the left turn will have the arrow. They'll have a protective phase when the right turn will be stopped.
Okay, so you, do you think they'll put a signal turn for the right lane, so the right lane has to stop so they can come in?
Yeah.
And currently, there's a no turn on red. And I was actually thinking that maybe lifting that for that hour would ease congestion, but only if there was some way to not have
Right, can't have left arrow
You can't have left arrow and a, and a right on red happening at the same time.
That's why they did it originally.
Right.
So I guess that goes to the second concern. So let's say the upgrades on Piscopo Hala Road happened, and we're able to more easily get traffic into campus, but now our bottleneck on campus still exists, right? So now we're introducing more cars more quickly onto campus with, with the right turn lane than what currently exists where you can't turn right on red. So that queue of traffic, where you said sometimes is nineteen cars backing up to almost where the buses are, I think we can expect that it could possibly be more. I mean, we're certainly in agreement that we're, we're going to experience a peak of cars. There's going to be a greater number of cars entering campus, and we consolidated lots of times, not just our school start times, but our teacher's start of the teacher day is more closely aligned with the start of the student day. And all of that traffic is forced down that one lane, the lane where we have adults and student drivers parking, we have high school and middle school drop off, and we have middle school teachers trying to pass through to get to the middle school parking lot. So that, I think, and I appreciate that everything is within the industry standards, but just speaking on behalf of my colleagues that are here, but just speaking on behalf of my colleagues that are here, there's certainly concerns that exist with the current traffic situation. So acknowledging that there will be more cars on campus is only, makes a greater concern for how we can, I understand within standards, but how can we improve the traffic flow on campus and do it in a way that's safe where we have students parking, students crossing parking lots and all of those things. So not being able to use the bus lane for any through traffic, although I understand you can't pass a bus, is there no alternative to move the area where the buses stop past the turning point where drop offs could then exit? So there's two loops within the campus, it's already called the high school loop and the middle school loop. Couldn't buses drop off past the turning point, which would allow traffic to continue to flow if you split the bus lane in two? If you go back to, if you go back to the staging, the bus staging slide, right there. So where you have the, the two yellow lines separated between the two buildings? If you divided that bus lane in two, it made the outer lane your through traffic and your drop off traffic and just allowed it to get to the end of the parking lot and make the left hand turn to loop back out and then dropped off the students closer to, in front of the middle school, would that not allow us to use that lane for both purposes? For bus traffic to drop off past the turning point so those cars don't need to stop when the buses stop, but also allow for through traffic to the middle school as well as exiting traffic? And we could also use that lane for student drop offs at that same intersection without interfering with the bus traffic?
Well, that would be, that would be something we, I, we would have to do more analysis of that to, because I, I'm not, we don't know, we don't have enough information right now to know how the buses queue, how many buses are, are in queue at the same time in the morning. So whether, whether we can fit, whether that it's random enough that, that they could all fit in front of the middle school? Is that, that's what you're saying, right?
I mean, I think the same theory could apply if the buses dropped in the loop in front of the high school. So if you left the main roadway there and they let students off in that little loop, could not traffic pass through on the main bus lane? So if high school students exited at that teardrop?
That would, that would be another possibility if, if there's, again, if there's enough room for them to queue them in there. Room for all of the buses that, yes.
So, I mean, I, in practicality, you could drop off high school students in the, in the teardrop there and then middle school students in front of the middle school and then still allow for traffic to pass through that lane. We would obviously partition it off so one couldn't cross into the other. But it seems like a, a way to alleviate some of the traffic that's trying to squeeze through that one lane with so much stuff happening in it.
That would be something that certainly would be worth investigating and, and even testing.
Cars will get out faster.
You know, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, I mean, even if you wanted to do a, a test program of that.
But the cars will end up getting out faster because of the, 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 the right turn lane coming in, so those, the green would be longer kind of coming out a little bit in certain, and, and how the timing will work on the cars coming out. Because you could still have cars coming out at the same time as the right lane, right turn lane coming in is going on. I would imagine that's how they'd program it so that, so you, the, the, the parking lot would empty out faster.
Right. I mean.
The other option would be to do drop offs at the top, do drop offs at the top of the, of the steps on the student parking lot side and they have to walk down the steps to the high school. If you did a, a high school drop off there, you could drop middle school off first or, you know, either way, you could do it at the teardrop first and then come to the end or you could drop the middle school and loop back around and do a drop there. Just a matter of, there's lots of cars moving in and out.
I, I think a, a bus would, my, my one concern, I think, with the, the buses using the, the visitor lot area would be the, their sight distance for pulling back into the, into the lane and being able to see traffic because of the angle of the bus and being able to see traffic. I mean, that would just be something that.
The buses really just drop and go, they don't stay in a queue, they literally just come in, drop in.
Right. Right. But if they were in that area, i- i- if they were in the teardrop, they would have to all wait if, if, they would have to wait for all of them.
Right, and there could be a lot of cars coming through at the same time.
And, and then they would be trying to assert themselves back into that stream of traffic. So, so it might be, it might end up being a less efficient bus drop off operation, but...
I think in order for that to be successful, we would have to partition that current bus lane into two separate lanes where the buses knew the lane they were entering on.
But a bus, a bus turning out of that teardrop wouldn't be able to fit.
I understand, they would go into the other lane, but they wouldn't be competing with traffic directly in their lane. But when we talk about capital improvements, I feel like there'd be ways for us to alter maybe that teardrop configuration or even maybe take a couple of spots out at the end of the parking lot to make the drop off turning lane sooner to give us more room to queue. Would be a much more cost effective alternative compared to building a whole new looped parking lot into, into campus. So I'm going to put my colleagues on the spot here. Our, our middle school and, and high school administration is here. I don't know if you guys have any, you gotta come up to the microphone if you want to speak though. If you have any questions or concerns, or are you guys good?
Just one other comment, back in the nineties, while he's coming up, back in the nineties, when we were talking about building the high school, we were worrying about something along these lines. We talked about having to drop out off the campus, the road behind the hill, up on the hill, and we talked about building a path, bunch of steps coming down, so you drop, the students would drop off outside the campus for most of the cars, because their parents are going someplace else. So they drop them up on the hill in the back, basically going up the road before the campus, dropping the students off, and we have a, a bunch of steps going down the hill or a little trail. We can, we even talked about building a little coverall, you know, you know, to protect the students, you know, if it's raining or something, to get, to get them down. So we talked about that. So there'd be a drop off area outside the, this campus that you're looking at, it'd be just over the hill behind it. We looked at that in the nineties.
Again, I, I think a lot of this has to do with, we need to see what it's going to be before we even think about doing anything of a cap, capital nature.
Come on in, Chris.
Chris O'Connor, Assistant Principal High School. I just have a question about how you came up with some of the projected data for next year. There's a slide that had the existing situation versus what it would look like next year. And in, in some cases, it looked like there was only a projected increase of maybe 12 cars or even less than that. I'm just wondering how you came up with those numbers considering we're going to have two schools starting at the same time next year, employees, staff, parking, where you, how you came up with those numbers?
What we were looking at was, keep going in the wrong direction. What we were looking at was basically this, this curve. And, and what you'll see is that there are, there are four data points, I'm looking at the, the plots on the far left diagram. So the, the two highest points are around the time of the high school start of classes. And then, then there's the dip and then there's the other curve, which is the middle school start of classes. So the hour of time already captures the stu-, the, the teacher, the teaching traffic for both, both schools are, are already happening within the hour, within the same hour. And, and most, most of the drop offs are still, are all happening within the same hour of time. It's just that we're pushing, that we're, we're pushing the, the second curve into that first higher curve and saying instead of, instead of having these, these two small, or one big hump and a small hump, that's, that second small hump is all happening up, up as part of that first curve. But they're still going to be because there are, there are factors of, you know, of, you know, students that are, are late for school, that's being, they're being dropped off because they missed the bus or, or they're late or, you know, so all of those factors will still happen and so that, so that there will still be traffic generated outside of that hour. So we didn't try, we didn't try to compress two hours of traffic into an hour because that's, that's just not going to happen.
Good evening, everyone. Travis McCarty, Principal of the Middle School. So there's a couple of concerns, I guess, and questions that I have. The first being currently we allow students to enter the middle school at 7:36 every morning and prior to letting students off the bus, we may have five buses lined up in our parking lot, which does have students sitting on the bus for a time period. So I'm figuring that in order to keep the buses moving quickly, my recommendation would be to avoid the teardrop, to drop kids off at the high school right away, which takes maybe 15 to 20, I don't know how long, seconds, maybe a minute at most. And then move to the middle school and drop them off immediately as well. But in doing so, we would have to either adjust teacher times or adjust bus drop off times so that kids can get unloaded and there's supervision. So I think that, that is my concern is having supervision for kids all getting unloaded with the additional four buses. And the other part is the parking lot in the middle, I'm an early bird, I actually come in before most high school teachers at the middle school. And I come in between 6:50 to 7 o'clock every morning and I do notice congestion in the high school parking lot with teachers parking. And then I've been behind parent drop off. And what really concerns me is cars that pass on the left is a very big safety issue for me. If there's going to be a drop off, it's single lane because I've seen close calls where cars go along the side, God forbid, a student gets out of the left hand door, right into the pathway of traffic. I just see increasing, making that right turning lane, increasing the traffic flow onto the campus. We're not increasing how quickly those kids get dropped off by their parents. So we're still going to have a little bit of a bottleneck at that middle intersection and I don't see what's alleviating that spot at this time. Maybe it exists, I'm not sure, but I think it's something we need to be thoughtful of.
Dave, can we go back one more time to the staging area slide? Because I think I, I agree with Jeremy and what Travis just said. Would there be any way, because in the morning, and I, I might be wrong, there's, most people are not using that far right outside lane to leave the middle school, the one on the curve. Everybody going through the middle are mostly teachers parking. The parents dropping off usually do so at that intersection, at the, at the bus stop. I'm wondering, could we use that whole outside lane as the bus, morning bus drop off and keep that bus lane in front of the high school for drop off only? Does that making any sense?
You mean have them come in on the top? Can I go out on the other? Can I go stand?
Is it the laser pointer? So essentially, the first bus would loop around the middle school parking lot and then drop off before exiting the middle school parking lot. So that would give you a large area to queue buses if they showed up at the same time.
But I, I don't know that you end up with a queuing issue in the morning, I, I, I mean, as far as the buses. I mean, that they're in, they're out. I mean, it's, if you have two buses or three buses at one time, that's a lot.
But I mean, if they don't stop at all. Like if you do not have the buses stopping, that's no longer a bus lane. That first yellow line is no longer a bus lane if they're just driving up till they get to their bus lane. Is that making sense? That just becomes another road.
Where they could, oh, right, they come through and they go all the way through the loop until the, the exit of that.
There's no longer a bus.
That's fine.
That's just the drop off and the buses just keep moving. But then parents, the buses have to stop around the parents.
But it's no different than what happens in the afternoon where parents are coming out of the, the, the middle lane in front of the high school and connecting with, with, when the middle school's letting out, they're coming, the buses are coming around this way. Because the buses do both at the middle school time, they cut both ways, they don't go all the way around all the time. I wonder also if, if angled parking makes a difference. Because one, what happens in the afternoon is you've got people trying to back out this way and cars this way as opposed to angled parking where they pull straight in, there's a lot less jockeying to get back into the spot too. You're easily pulling into it in that direction. It makes it very clear as what you do, nobody backs into their spot that way. And so you're not, we, losing time. If, if all the, if we appropriately angle the parking spots, that might make a difference for at least the, the, the staff versus bus versus people dropping off situation.
The sight lines aren't as good for angled parking, for, for people backing out, the, the sight lines to traffic that's in the lane is not as, as direct. So that, so that there's, there's more of a safety.
With angled parking?
With angled parking than with perpendicular parking. But I, we have noticed that, that there are a lot of, at least some of the student, we're, we're presuming to them to be the student drivers based on where they were parking, that they, they took two or three times to get into their spot properly.
But all, I mean, the issue is when you have in the afternoon to pick up high school kids, the parents are getting picked, picking them up, they're students and faculty trying to get out at the same time that's, that people will getting picked up. So, I mean, I know we're not really worried much about the afternoon as much as we are the morning.
There's really not that much pickup activity in the afternoon.
What I, what I would recommend at this point, you've done this, you know, we have your study, I think administrators need more time to look at it, mull it over, go out and look at the morning. You know, Fran's been whispering in my ear, until we see it, we don't exactly know.
I have to say, we, we've had a study done and I think we're going to have to have some belief that the study will, you know, will have to, I, I don't like the idea of tinkering with something before we know how it actually works. I think we need to utilize this, the analysis and then, you know, if there are needs.
And be ready to tinker really fast.
We, we have, we have to think of some adjustments, but I, I think, I, I sort of see what is being said here based on the graphs and I'd like to, it would be nice if we could test it, but, but I don't know if we'll have that opportunity. But if we could, that would be very, very helpful, even to test it just one or two days before we leave school for the year.
Have the high school start later one day.
Yeah, I mean, if, if we could get the buses, those three, you know, the buses just.
I just said the same thing. I just whispered it to Jeremy.
I like it.
I wish we could just bring, just one day to practice.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful because it would at least, it wouldn't be perfect, but it would give us a sense.
It would demonstrate the nightmare in the first day, because it would be a nightmare any first day anyway.
Exactly. But it would give us what we need to tinker with. And then we could work on that over the summer. I mean, I think that.
Your people need to look at making that announcement, I would say, before finals because it doesn't make sense after finals, because nobody comes in at the same time.
And I still want to take one quick look at that back area and that, where those, that empty spaces, you know, where we have that little garden starting down over there, just for, even if it's just a senior parking lot, I just, that's 80 kids, you know, seniors and this, and do a separate entrance just for seniors, just to take a look at that. I don't know if the impact would really be worth it, but it is, certainly a parking lot is cheaper and manageable for seniors and, and a separate entrance. So it's just one more idea throwing out.
All right, I think you've given us lots to think about.
There, there is lots to think about.
And, and getting, you know, the good snapshots based on what you saw, I think is going to inform all of our decision making, so.
And we can certainly make the video available to you, so if you, if you want to, if you, you want to watch it.
I think that would be good, yeah.
Thank you.
You know, as you know, Mr. Papalino's. You know, as you know, Mr. Bolino's retiring, I think.
In his retirement, he, you know, he could spend all summer looking at.
There you go. And, and his successor certainly needs to see this information, so. Well, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things we do need to worry about is, not worry about, but isn't the parking lot scheduled for work this summer?
I don't know.
As far as resurfacing? Because if it is, you know, that, that gets into, do we set up lanes or think about lanes? It's really important that if, it, it is scheduled for the summer, that we do whatever test run or whatever we want to do so that we have the lines in the right place at the beginning of the year. And I don't remember, was this year or next year, that Pat was talking about doing the resurfacing, or if it was part of finishing after the EPC was done.
Hey, can we contact the county and have them not do the lane configuration June 6th? I mean, September 5th?
During all that construction, right.
Yeah, well, and that would be one thing, I think, that, that would be something that you would need to keep in mind if you, if you do do a test before they do the intersection improvements, is there will be more congestion there than what we were talking about tonight.
You know, I'd almost rather see worst-case scenario, even than best, assuming that it will be better with that one.
Sorry, just related to that, do we have any sort of timeline when we expect the county to make those improvements?
All I've heard was that it was this construction season.
So, we need to use our context to find out, because it can't be September 5th.
That's, that's when the, I, I, I don't know what the whole timeline of the, of the project is, whether it's a, a one-year construction or two-year construction for the whole project. So, so I, I don't know exactly when these intersection improvements.
Could be.
Another DOT, another DOT issue with Pudding Street.
They'll, they'll have, they'll have it all shut down on your opening day.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
No flowers for you, though.
And, and I'd rather not hug you, if that's okay. Okay. Moving right along, I think that was lengthy but necessary. We now are the reason our, our meeting is on a Tuesday and not a Wednesday. We and every of our 18 constituency schools in Putnam Northwest Boces met tonight for their trustee candidate in budget. Mr. Cowan, would you like to talk about that, or Miss, or Dr. Wills, or? Well, it's all in the, the resolution.
Yes, it's in the resolution. There are two seats, I believe. And they are Catherine Lilburn and Michael Simkins.
Catherine's from Garrison and Michael's from Peekskill. Catherine is already on the board.
On the board, yes, she's in income.
And, and Michael is on the Board of Education in Peekskill.
Peekskill, correct. So, that's the board seat, and they are two for two, so it's not a...
Right, no competition. And the other item is the budget.
Yes.
And their budget right now is seventy-four million, seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, of which the programming budget, the actual service part of the budget, is just under sixty-five million. And then, the capital budget for some work at their facility is just about a half a million, just over a half a million. And finally, the administrator budget, the salaries and everything else for their staff is just over nine million.
And, you know, I, I think what's, what's important there is their budget to budget, too, is they have a 2.7, 7, uh, 8%, but our increase is 2.45. And the decision on that is made by looking at the wealth ratio and the, the use, but the, that's how they figure out how much we actually pay in an increase. And it's, it's, it's quite, it is not as significant as some of the others. Let's, let's state it that way, that it's a fair increase for us, 2.45. It's even under our own cap. And they do keep within the, they're very conscious of, of the caps. And the capital is also, the, our share of the capital budget, as far as an increase is concerned, is a little over, I believe it's, it's fifteen thousand dollars this year that we have to, that's proposed, correct, Jill? It's about fifteen thousand that is proposed for this year?
For the capital?
Yes.
Yes.
That we pay. Which is, that, that's an increase because they feel that they need to increase their ti- I think it's an increase of another seven thousand dollars.
Right.
Because they feel they need to have more in their capital fund in order, because they have a, a very large campus.
Right, to keep up. And the only, the only thing is they're fighting for is to be able to include that capital piece in our tax cap calculation, which has not been allowed yet to, you know, but they're, they're still fighting for the districts to be able to do that, so maybe next year.
You know, I think what's significant is we have 63 students going to their CTE program there, which is significant news.
They have done an incredible job also with some of their programs in changing the expectations, and it's much more curriculum-based, and, and just even the improvements that they've made in their student-to-teacher ratios and in their equipment. It's been incredible.
So, we, sorry, go ahead.
No, just, I think we're fortunate in that our, our ratios are fairly, are very reasonable in terms of what we get out of it.
Yes, exactly.
With our use of it.
The benefit is incredible.
Right.
Because remember, was it two years ago that there was that big, they wanted, some of the wealthier districts wanted to move towards a use-only calculation?
Correct, right, yes.
Because some of those wealthier districts were not using it very highly.
But they pay a very large proportion.
Right, and, and there, now it is a combination. It's both usage and wealth.
Right.
Okay, the number three on the presentation is simply my announcement that the treasures report for March 2018 is available in the business office. Before we get into consent agenda, there is no space for super, for superintendent's report in these. So, Dr. Wills, I know that you can't have that, because I saw your little superintendent report notes right next to me.
No, I, I wanted to keep it.
So, I'd like to move into a superintendent's report.
I wanted to keep it very brief, just a couple of things. I was recently, I, I recently had a visit from the Director of the Peers Program that we have, the documentary program, and found that one of our students, J.C. Ferraro, wrote the screenplay for this year's 25th anniversary documentary on marijuana, so.
Has everybody on the board mentioned J.C. Ferraro?
Has, has written that screenplay, which is pretty exciting. And there's a, this is a very, it's a major anniversary that they're having of this program that is really quite nationally known in its scope. And also, I just wanted to mention the Girls in Sports Day, that was very successful this year. Well over 120 girls, I think, came, and it was another beautiful day. And I wanted to thank Rebecca Con...
No, Girardi.
Girardi. For her effort in making this happen with the support of our school, all, all the school coaches and, and the athletic director. Also, I wanted to mention this very special event that occurred, the walk-up at the high school, instead of a walk-out. Our students with the leadership of Mrs. Triari had a walk-up. And I wanted to read a letter that I received today from a parent talking about the walk-up. "I wanted to share my heartfelt thanks for using the walk-up as an opportunity for our student community to break bread and come further together. My daughter Sabrina and her two friends were discussing their reaction to the event while I was carpooling. Their recounting of what they witnessed and experienced elicited such strong positive emotions. Thank you for opportunities such as this to further unite our wonderful and special community." So, I thought that was really very touching, particularly given.
So, what did they do?
They had a breakfast for all of the students, and we had the sheriff, the new sheriff, Langley was there, Mr. Oliverio was there. Sheriff Langley talked about, you know, see something, say something. He talked about how we promote safety in schools most effectively. And there was a genuine feeling of community that was developed at that breakfast. And Mrs. Triari, the principal, had talked to students about what they wanted to do on that day, and students felt that they wanted to do something that brought them together. So, it, it certainly seemed to have met, met its mark with that. Also, the community read took place last week, and we had about 16 people there. It was another one of those examples of how the community and the schools have partnered, because that was a partnership with the library, the public library, and with other institutions in the community, with the synagogue in the community, and with others, with the Tompkins Cultural Center, where, you know, we reach out from the school to the community, and we want to have that kind of relationship. We also had the senior citizens visiting us for the play, which was an incredible play. The senior citizens loved that play. It was very much of their time. They, they enjoyed it thoroughly, the dinner, and all of the, the work that Dawn and Karen did for these, for the dinner this year, making the point that this was a way that Putnam Valley residents, even without students in the schools, could really partake of what the schools had to offer. And there was a, a very good feeling at that event as well. We also received a wonderful letter today from Boces, from David Jacob, who was the head of the science, the next-gen science curriculum there at Boces. And he was saying how much our science teachers at the elementary school contribute to the science program there. We have, they're doing videos of our teachers doing the science, and he said that this was almost like a lab school, he felt, for science education, which, I mean, I think really is demonstrated in the fact that so many of our kids go into science. They go into chemical engineering and biochemistry, so there's definitely, definitely a sense there.
We should see those videos at a board meeting.
Yeah, we, we saw, I think we saw one of them on the kindergarten, so they're doing another one now with second grade, which we hope we'll be able to see. Just to mention that, yes, the play was incredible last week, but we have another play this weekend, The Whiz, that the middle school is, is putting on. And of course, we had the elementary play before that. And I think that, again, is another area, the theater program, which is so successful in our schools.
Dr. Cowan, do you have a report? Is that okay, good? I mean, that's fine.
Jill, I have a question on the Boces budget. The nine million dollars that we're voting on, what's our share?
The nine million dollars that we're voting on?
To approve their budget, what's our share?
Um, our share?
Well, when you say what's our share, do you mean how much are we spending on our, in our budget on Boces overall?
No, I think he's asking for the share of the administrative.
More of this share of this budget, the share of the 9.2 million dollars.
Well, our participation is different every year, so, you know, it, I don't have the dollar amount that we're participating at, and it, it can vary depending on what programs we, we use.
Well, in this case, it's the, the administrative budget.
You're talking about the administrative portion.
Yeah, so it's, it's 243,000, $449, which is 5,000, only 5,824 more than last year. And it represents a change of 2.45%. And of the whole budget, of the whole budget, it's 2.63%. So, that compares to, let's say, some other districts where they're paying 8.52% or 6.60% or 7.61% based on their wealth, the wealth of those districts. They're actually, you know, we're actually doing quite well in terms of what we expend.
Right, but the administrative portion of the budget only represents a very small portion of the budget that we spend at Boces. I just want to say that, because, I mean, that's...
That's very important.
I'm just talking about what we're approving tonight.
We spend well over, we spend over a million dollars or more at Boces. So, but you're talking about...
I didn't want anybody to talk, think that we were paying 9.2 million dollars by voting.
And it's a 75 million dollar budget, 9 million is only the administrative.
But, but it's important to know that we actually, for us, it's really a boon, it's a benefit, because for us, we have usage, we do participate. Our kids get a lot out of it, and so what we pay in is less than some for, for what they, how they're using it.
It's very cost-effective.
It's very cost-effective. It's, we would, our kids would never have these opportunities if it weren't.
Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Ferraro?
Resolving recommendations submitted to schools to approve the consent agenda, items two through 12 as presented to the board at this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
We're approving additional hours for our school psychologists so they can complete some work on us, one of our students. We're approving CSE, CPSA placements. We're approving a new start date for the nurse, and she works with one of our students who attends Carmel High School. We're casting votes for the Putnam Northern Westchester Boces Board of Education. We're voting for Catherine and Michael, so we're agreeing that we are voting for them. We're approving the 9,258,678, the administrative part of the Putnam Northern Westchester Boces. We're approving a long-term substitute teacher for a middle school teacher. We're approving an AP PR plan stipend for the Assistant Principal of the elementary school, so she can continue all her work in that area. We're approving a contract with Putnam Northern Westchester Boces for services for our students with special needs, and that's 1.58, 1,589,102 dollars. We're approving work with the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, and they help us purchase the MAX and approximately 330 MAX we're going to be purchasing. We're approving a budget transfer covering the fees for the capital projects that we're going to be doing at this school, the geothermal and the sewer injection pump stations, and we're taking that money out of some special projects and health benefits where we don't need this money. And we're terminating an employee who's a cleaner at the school.
Questions or comments? That was questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, open it up to public comment.
I'll just make it real quick. On Peers, that Dr. Wills mentioned, Peers Influenced Peers on May 18th will be having their big show, and this year, it's in Peekskill at the Paramount on Peers and, yeah.
Is it an anniversary of Peers?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, yeah.
Yeah, for those who don't know, Peers started in this district, one of our teachers, Mr. Frank Reali, and now he's the president, and Buck Hella is the vice president of Peers.
Okay, so is that it from everybody else on the board?
We do have a meeting on next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Not next Thursday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, for the budget.
Public hearing, the budget.
Final budget hearing. Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night, everyone.